...with Principal Willis. I decided I wanted to be involved, I thought there was an open seat, so I decided to go.
Great, thank you. And I did the same thing, that was kind of my trajectory.
Yeah.
Start out Spalding School Council, so on and so forth, so welcome.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Annie Cameron Essex. I have four kids, my last one is graduating on Friday.
I just signed her diploma.
So, I'm almost finished, I'm sad, but, but I'm stuck here for two more years. No, I'm not, I love it, this is a great committee. And Caroline and I are on Building Committee, and Shannon and I are doing Finance Subcommittee.
And Annie's institutional, she has been on the school committee for a long time.
Usually it goes by as the beginning.
And the Building Committee for this school, too.
Oh wow.
So, yeah, she's a well-informed person.
Sarah Brighton for all the fall two C.
Ken Warnock, this is, I'd like to recognize Sarah for her reelection to her second term, third term.
Second and a half.
Second and a half term, so.
Great campaign, too, very, kept it clean.
No negative press.
That's right.
Just like mine, so, I was gonna say, this is the end of first term, beginning of second term, three kids that are kindergarten, first grade, should do better, eighth grade and tenth grade. So, and it has been a very educational experience for me, so it would be adult ed version, as well as, I hope, that I'm helping out.
I'm Shannon Erdman, Chair. I have a son in eighth grade, a son in tenth grade, and I have two more years on my third term. And I got involved because, as I just explained, kind of a natural trajectory, when I stopped working and moved here and had kids, I thought, how am I gonna give back, and what can I best give my, you know, strengths to? And I thought, what's more important than my kid's education? So I got involved with Memorial, actually Spalding, when my kids were really, really little, then Memorial School Council, and then this was kind of a natural progression. So, as I said, this is my fifth year, and happy to be here.
And I'm Rachel Fitzgibbon, Essex, co-chair with Shannon. I have a daughter who is in Hoover Sheriff College, graduated from here last year, and a tenth grade daughter as well. And similar to Shannon, we were on Spalding together, and then I moved on to Middle School Council and High School Council. And I've always kind of had, you know, a foot in the schools in one capacity or another. And this is my second year of my first term, so I have next year, and then we'll see what happens after that. But, and I'm on Policy and Communications Subcommittee with Karen. So, welcome, we're happy to have you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I'm Caroline Weld, and you neglected to say that you helped us with the building project, Swiss marketing case, you're familiar with that. I'm on Building Committee with Annie, and I'm on my last year of my third term. And I have a daughter that is in like ninth grade, yes, yeah. And I got involved because of glass eyes. Yes, when she was in kindergarten, a long time ago.
I'm Sarah Wolf, this is my second term, second and a half, because I was appointed to fill a vacancy. I love being on School Committee, it's a great group. I'm a teacher, so I am still certified, I just checked as an early childhood.
Why are you earlier for that?
Early childhood through third grade with, with and without disabilities, is my certificate. And a reading teacher, so I love to be on School Committee, and I especially like to geek out on nights like tonight, when it's something that's breaking my wheelhouse, so I get all like excited around those kinds of conversations. And I have, oh yeah, I have an eighth grader, Ken and I have eighth graders together, and I have a graduating senior, so my head is a little frazzled right now with Annie, we have a lot going on. All good.
I'm Gail Hunter, I'm a retired direct marketing account director, and I take the minutes.
She keeps us on our toes.
So, find the typo. Well, you know. Oh, they're there.
Avi, you're up. Just a quick introduction.
Hi, Avi Erb, this is the district administrator of the school system.
He's the resident genius.
It's a good idea to set up a meeting with him, to just go over budget, because it's kind of hard to understand, and it'll take you a while to get it, but it's always good to have Avi to kind of just go over that more with you, to just show you in the budget.
My dad actually spent, when I was a little, a long time on School Committee, and then, and he said the first thing we should do is talk to.
Welcome to want in, happy to meet with you.
Great.
The rule of thumb with our office will say, oh, it'll be like a quick fifteen minute meeting, three times as long.
That's how all meetings are.
So, just, thank you all, so just to give you a quick, oh Pam.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I cut you off, I'm sorry.
I'm Pam, and I'm the person who calls your house when there's snow.
And all of our kids think that we have an inside line to Pam, and can control any snow days, not true.
Please don't text the day before. It's kind of crazy listening to how long everybody's been together, so this is the end of my ninth year. So, Caroline and I came on board, together, you had gone off and come back. So, I just think it's, you know, it's a tremendous district, I can't imagine doing this work anyplace else. And we have accomplished a lot in a very, it used to feel like a short period of time, now it's getting to be longer, and I think there's never a problem we can't find, or a solution we're not interested in pursuing, once we find it. So, I think you're really gonna enjoy the group, it's really collaborative and team-oriented, and I think that's really a mark of the leadership on the School Committee over the past few years, and the consistency within, that's kind of allowed the group to gel and become, have some systems and structure. They can be a core group as opposed to a set of independent agendas. So it's just a really, it's a really great group and a really great district, so we have a lot to do.
Yeah, we do. So, to that note, on the collaborative piece, Eric, we spoke very briefly via email, and I just wanted to kind of inform the group in terms of like a, what did I call it? An onboarding process, wanted to make you feel like there was a structure in place, that you had some, you know, a clear pathway. So to that end, I suggested that Eric do the charting course, remember that many years ago? So I think he's gonna look into the one, where was it, Lexington? Lexington, end of June-ish, which gives you a nice kind of entree, introduction to what's going on. And the nice thing is, you'll have a couple of meetings already under your belt, so it won't sound like Greek.
Right.
It will make some sense. And also, I thought it might be a good idea to have Eric have a mentor. And to that end, Rachel's gonna be Eric's mentor, because she's.
I think of it as a little buddy.
Yeah.
You know, a mentor per se, but anyway.
Since Rachel's the newest, she has, she, yeah, she remembers more easily than the rest of us do, kind of what some of the, what some of the, you know, obstacles might be, or some of the worries, or, you know, just some of the surprises. So I thought that might make some sense, just to make sure you have a smooth transition. And if there are any questions, we're always here. And beware, we like to talk a lot, I'm not jaded.
No, not you.
Yes, we have a rabbit hole rule, because we all like to dive into the rabbit holes and swim around. So we're very quick to call the rabbit hole on one another, because it can get rabbit-y pretty quickly. So, with that said, let's move on to public comment. I don't see anybody here, so we will move on from there. Reorganization, I'm not quite sure how to do this, or what to do, so I'm looking to you for guidance.
I will take the gamble.
Okay.
And I will ask for, or announce that it is the annual reorganization that takes place the first meeting after the town elections, at which you are to reestablish your leadership structure. And sometimes we do the Subcommittee appointments as well, but in the past, we've deferred those to the summer, and once we've reestablished who our Chair Vice Chair will be, they do some work, they announce them, you come in the summer. So, at this point, I'll take nominations for Chair of the School Committee first.
I nominate Shannon Erdman as Chair, and Rachel's co-chair, if they accept.
Do they have to be separate, or can they be standard?
Individual.
Shannon Erdman for Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I think Shannon's a really awesome Chair, and I would love to see her continue for another decade.
You almost heard this.
I'll be dead. Thank you, I accept, yeah.
Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Thank you.
I'm gonna pass the gamble back to the Chair.
Okay. Rachel?
Nomination for Vice Chair.
Oh, may I have a nomination for Vice Chair?
I nominate Rachel Fitzgibbon.
Thank you. All, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Do you think I accept?
Thank you. All right, we're in again.
I was gonna go.
We love you guys, thanks for continuing on.
Thank you, thank you for your confidence. That's true. So, student report, Spencer is probably very busy, so he's not here. Chairman's report, I just have a couple of quick things to say. Rachel and I met with our MAS C Representative Dorothy Presser a couple of days ago, was it, or yesterday? Whatever, it was a couple, a couple of days ago.
Friday.
Yeah, okay, Friday, gosh, seems like yesterday.
Yeah.
She was nice enough to come up and kind of just give us a little tutorial on sort of the Chair position, because we've never really had like a formal training on that. So it was really nice to hear that we're actually doing a lot of things as a committee correctly, and efficiently. So, that was good. The only recommendation that she had was onboarding any new members, which was really timely, because Eric is here. So, the mentor idea was hers, mask, which, the, the, charting the course. So, very timely, and very interesting. Oh, yes. Yes. Wait, what was the handbook idea?
So, Dorothy suggested also that she, she said it's very, it's great if committees can have their own handbook. So, it's kind of a, kind of who we are, what we do, it's just a few pages. And she sent us, just the other day, some examples of some from about three other districts. And, and I'm happy to take on sort of doing a rough pass at a handbook for all of us, that we can start to review over the summer. But I think it would just be great to, a great resource for us all to have.
Yeah, just something that, like a living document that's here, when we all might not be.
Like our mission, and, you know, all that good stuff.
And one thing we also talked about, which I think is the most important, which I forgot, I'm sorry, talking about our goals, and making sure that our goals are aligning with what we're actually doing, and that we do check in with them regularly. I know we do, maybe, what, once or twice a year? So we thought perhaps we might do that a little bit more often. So maybe we'll do a quarterly check-in with our goals, and kind of see where we are vis a vis what we have written down on the paper, and if it's still valid, and whether or not we should revise them. So that was, you know, something we talked about. And again, you know, we are basically doing that, we may just need to tighten it up a little bit. So it was good to hear that we are not clueless. And then the last thing I wanted to discuss with you guys was, we were contacted by K-PAN TV to do a What You Need to Know, thirty second, almost, I don't wanna say promotional video, but, you know, basically what's going on with the School Committee, give it to us in thirty seconds. I think other members of the town government have done that, and it seems kind of helpful. So, I did that, I don't know if it's been posted yet.
It hasn't.
It hasn't. So, I thought maybe a good idea was that we should do more of these. And maybe we could do a couple of them, and I'll do them if you want me to, and we'll do them, you know, kind of as the building project pro- I can't speak, progresses. And maybe we'll just do a quick update, this is what's going on, this is, you know, maybe the next thing to look out for, just so we have a presence online, like a face that's smiling, and, you know, somebody who is there, rather than sort of avoid. Even if we're not saying anything really earth-shattering, just, you know, some calendar items, and kind of what's going on with the School Committee, what's going on with the building projects. So I thought that might be something we should look into going forward, and do. Any thoughts?
They're doing a lot of stuff, it's Studio sixteen twenty-three, correct?
Oh yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, 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 don't be sorry.
Well, they're also called K-PAN TV.
Yeah, but they're doing a lot of stuff, it's interesting, like they did something with four representatives from each town on regionalization, and they also did one about women in government. So it was the same roundtable, but, you know, they're doing really great stuff, and I think that that's.
So I think it's a great resource to tap, so if we have it on, or they have it on their YouTube, you know, their School Committee YouTube page, you know, maybe we can grab it and put it on any of our social media, maybe somebody from town can grab it from there, and, you know, just so we, we get the message out, we have a face, and, you know, sort of a voice, and maybe a smile associated with what we're doing. So, that can never hurt. So when did you report that?
Friday.
Friday, and it should hit in the next, I don't know, a couple of days.
I checked yesterday afternoon, and it wasn't out yet.
Tricia did one earlier this year.
She did one a while ago.
The libraries do it, too.
K-PAN Superintendents are scheduled already for eight twenty-one, to go in for kind of a back-to-school piece. So, I know they're making a great effort to try to reach out and pull people in.
Yeah.
So, I think it's a great idea, thank you.
Well, Rachel and I will stay on top of that, and just make sure we, we get a bunch of those, you know, at least two of those this summer, maybe, under our belt, and then we can kind of, you know, have a little bit more of a framework going forward, and maybe do it once a quarter, kind of thing? Maybe even a little bit often, more often than that, depending on what we've got going on, because we are gonna have a lot going on next year. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
No, it's just because it's probably worth explaining what the consent agenda is for Eric.
Oh, oh Eric, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm going to. So, in the consent agenda, we basically sort of packaged all of our business items, rather than have to go through them one by one. So we have the acceptance of warrants, which is basically any of our bills that we need to pay, and you probably saw that in the, in the handout, or in the email, our minutes, and Gail's been awesome at keeping on top of our minutes, so we only have last, last week's minutes, or last meeting's minutes. So that's huge, thank you for that. And budget transfers. So what we like to do is just package them, we'll approve them in one fell swoop, we can discuss any of them. Sometimes what we do is, just depending on what's on the warrant, we'll each selectively, or individually, look through it, and if anybody has any questions, we shoot it to Avi. CC everybody else, and Avi's great about getting back. And we have plenty of questions, so don't, don't be shy, because.
And if it's, if it's something you think it would be in the public interest, or worth explanation, it gets brought to the table, and we answer it before.
Thank you. Annie?
You have budget transfers on here, I didn't see budget.
We don't, I was gonna say, we do not have budget transfers. We're gonna have our significant year-end budget transfers on the June eighteen meeting.
Perfect, okay, I just wanted to make sure that was still on. Okay.
Okay, so, back to the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I am going to abstain from this one.
Two.
And Eric as well.
Got it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Subcommittee reports. So Eric, this is basically, you know, pretty self-explanatory. Some nights, we will have lots of stuff to say, because there will be lots of stuff going on. Elementary facilities usually has had a lot to say every meeting, because these guys have been really busy with the project across the street. Finance Committee, we usually have a lot to say, and we're usually quite busy during the school year, moving up to the budget. Annie and I sit on the Sub-Finance Committee, and we work in a collaborative group with the towns, which is terrific, because we kind of operate on a no-surprises basis. So we have, I'd say maybe almost a bi-monthly meeting, when, when, you know, when we're moving up close to the budget. So we meet with both Town Administrators, one representative from each Board of Selectment, and one representative from each FinCom. And it's great, we just get, you know, everybody around a table, and we talk about what's going on, we talk about some of, you know, the town's difficulties, we talk about what's going on with our budget. So when it comes time to look at our budget, we know what's going on with the towns, the towns know what's going on with us, so there are no surprises. And it has, gosh, we've been doing it for five years at least, at least since I've been here. And in recent years, I think we've really tightened it up, and it's been a really, really great tool.
Since twenty-ten.
Yeah, so, gosh, nine years, long time. And I think everybody who's involved thinks it's very worthwhile. Anyway, moving on. And then we have Policy Committee, as you see, we've got a couple of things to discuss there. And the Negotiation Team, the negotiations just closed, or bless you, around the MITA budget, I'm sorry, the MITA contract. So, these Sarah and Julie, who is no longer on the Board, bless you.
Thanks, sorry.
Countless hours around the negotiation table. So, thanks to them, that issue has been closed. It's in the process of, you know, kind of final dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
I just say one thing.
Yeah, please.
We had a really good team, and we use something called IBD, which is Interest-Based Bargaining, instead of Positional Bargaining, which is, which is a really nice tool. So they're talking about that, and it's kind of interesting.
Yeah, it's more collaborative type of.
I sent you a list of acronyms, and I don't think IBD is on there, but that should be added.
So that's kind of wrapping up our Subcommittee. So with that, we'll move on to everybody's various updates. So, Annie and Caroline?
Sure, I'm gonna just shoot down the list of what we did last, we had a meeting last night. We approved the second early bid package, so that is gonna be going out at the end of the week. I know that there were some final changes that we had to make to the numbers, but one thing I just wanna make note of, is that we are aware of the fact that there may be an increase in costs due to Mexican tariffs.
Although the news today, Republicans are coming back, saying they are unhappy with this thing.
Yeah, so, we shall see. So that is just something to consider as we bid for furniture, I think, and technology.
Probably worth clarifying, it's increasing the line item within the larger line item. So it's nothing that would impact the overall cost of the project, but could cause some, you know, thought to have to go into how we're going to manage aspects of the budget.
We also had put together a list of alternates, they're called ad alternates, and when you go out to bid, Avi, you can clarify this for me. You have this list of possible ads or subtractions from the project, to kind of negotiate, you know, to work your budget. And so, we have a small Subcommittee that's gonna be working, Pam and her team are gonna work on looking at the furniture fixture and equipment, and that's FFNE, and it's everything that, if you turn the building over and shook it, everything that would fall, that is FFNE. That was somebody, somebody told me that, and it was easy to remember.
That's a really good way to remember.
But, they're gonna work on that budget, it's gonna inform our alternates budget, so that's, that discussion is happening, and we'll have no more at the end of the month.
It's not as easy as, we just don't want this anymore. Each thing we move, it's, it's gonna be a real exercise.
In, yeah, in what do we, yeah, where can we find some savings, and where can we, and is there stuff that we could really wanna have, that is worth the cost? So, you know, it's the same thing as we did before we finished the final budget.
Kind of like the value-based engineering kind of thing?
Everything is to stay within our budget, we are not, there's no, no interest in exceeding our budget. There's also a nice group of people who are gonna be reviewing the contractors, is it decamp certification stuff? Is that what that is?
So. Filed subbits.
Filed subbits, so that's, and I, Tyler, Andy, and.
And Adam.
So, that's great that they're gonna help us. Pam has been authorized to approve any emergency expenditures in, over the summer, or actually, during the course of construction, that happen outside of our movements. So, she'll come to us if there's anything.
Up to fifty thousand.
Can I clarify just for, on that one?
Yep.
So those aren't necessarily, they're time-sensitive, but I wouldn't really call them necessarily emergencies. Just like we have the signing warrant here, where maybe in between a cycle, where we're not meeting, and we need to prove something, sometimes there'll be a case where contractor needs to move something within a day or two, and needs changed funding there, provided the amount is small, it's more time-sensitive. So it is an emergency, it starts with not like a crisis, it's more like just a time-sensitive authorization of funds.
To keep the wheels moving.
Yep.
I think the classic example they gave is, we're working against the deadline, and we need to keep the crew on Saturday, so can you sign off on them coming in on Saturday?
Okay. And that would come with a notification to us, right, just heads up?
Follow-up afterwards, that's right.
Perfect, yeah, okay.
We have a, a meeting with ConCom tonight, we hope to get the final approval. But if we don't get it tonight, we're okay until, I think, middle of June.
July. I thought you said July.
Next meeting.
Twenty-two, twenty-fifth.
You don't think one or two means to wrap it up? Hopefully one, maybe two.
And then there's a Planning Board meeting on June tenth, and we feel confident that we'll get what we need from them then as well. So, permits have been, fine, it's just been fraught.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a busy road, yeah, permits.
We have the groundbreaking next Monday at ten thirty, which lasts about an hour, at the most.
Is it ten or ten thirty?
Ten thirty. Okay, so as many as you can come, that would be appreciated.
So, Call Board, Board of Selectmen and Finance in Manchester and Essex have both been invited, and we also, because they've been a part of the process, extended invitations to the ConCom Planning Board in Manchester, the entire SBC, this entire Board is invited. But it's also customary for Jack McCarthy from MSBA to come out and kind of kick off the process of ceremonial shovel in the ground.
Who brings the gold shovel?
We have some silver-plated, some very economical silver-plated shovels coming in.
Flyer degree of shovels.
So we have the ceremonial shovels with all of, any dignitaries picture with the shovel in the ground. The local Pauls have been invited, you never know what their availability is. Because our timeline is crazy fast, it's, you know, our notice to them is so short, I'm not necessarily anticipating.
Is that televised? Does that need to be televised?
No.
And then we've got our parent meeting tomorrow night, Wednesday night, and then the neighborhood meeting afterwards, so parents at five, neighborhood seven, yeah.
Seven thirty.
And that night's over.
That's in here, or are we auditing more?
More, sixteen twenty-three is gonna be there to film it, so we'll be able to post it up. Because I know that was in the past, John, Will's had been talking to some parents. It's not a great kind of year, but we wanna engage anybody who's available to come out, we'll be able to post it online, just. And then the other thing that's just important for this Committee to know, is that we have a, which I think, they came to one of our, maybe our last meeting, but there's a group of parents who are gonna be presenting the fund of the Board of Selectmen about lights over at the tennis court, and that they're gonna do, that they say that they've got the funding to take care of it all, and they're going there out of the board's preference to approve it, so you don't know where. But we're still taking the stand of that, we think that our plan of the start time of three thirty, and using Essex is the way we're going. They're looking for our support, but I don't think that we're at that point yet. But they are, right, pretty much.
I think they're going forward.
Yeah, and if the next Board of Selectmen meeting, they're presenting to them to see if they can be moved forward and get a clear plan. But it's not part of our project.
I haven't heard back from the high school yet, that this is an impossible task, and they know that they need to tell me if that's the case. So so far, we've been fine. I think there are just differing opinions as to whether or not it's going, you know.
It's an idiot rabbit hole, that was just a, that was just a.
So maybe we'll be talking about it on June.
Alert, yeah.
I wanted to clarify the taping of the meetings across the street. Will we just be taping the parent meeting, or will we be taping both meetings, parent and the butters?
They said they would stay for the neighbors, we don't have any sense, last time we had five people, and sometimes it's really just a conversation about the culvert, which butts somebody's yard, so it's kind of particular to an individual. So it's not, I think we said it was important to note, it's not a public hearing, and it's not to any kind of technical butters meeting, it's really just.
We're switching that word to neighborhood, we're trying to.
Attempt to communicate with the neighbors about where the plans stand at this time, when they can expect a start to hear noise on the site, which is two weeks.
Okay, all right, thank you, you guys. Wow, it's really, it's really moving along.
So far, on time?
Yep.
On budget?
Thank you, guys. That's right.
So, just so you know, ConCom starts at six thirty, but school is last, there you go.
Finance Committee, it's been very quiet, so we have no update. Policy Committee, I know we talked about second read on a couple of things, so let's take a look at that.
I don't know that they even technically need a second read, but I brought them forward, they were the change to the residency language, and Rachel helped me remember what the second one was.
Yeah, it was the Men of Homless. So nothing has changed since the first read.
And again, for Eric's benefit, we went through our coordinated program review this year, which is the state mandated six-year cycle evaluation of all of our departments, which have major. which have major complaints, so special education, civil rights and English language learners. And one of the first pieces out of it was something called the Educational Stability Report. And they said you need to update your policies around managing enrollment of foster students, students who are military families, et cetera. So they're pretty just DEFC-recommended technical changes.
Okay, so do you, do we need a motion to approve those?
I think it's safer to do that and then it'll all be signed, sealed and delivered.
There is also an update to the admissions and residency policy. Which is just, which is not actually part of our policy manual, but it's.
It sits on the sign.
Sits on the website.
Okay, so let's take those separately, just because of the nature of where they.
So I'm literally asked for approval for the new policies, JFEBD, which is homeless students. Should I do them, I'll do them all collectively because they're all. JFEDF, which is educational opportunities for children foster care, it's all in the table. As well as JFEBD, educational opportunities for military children. And so ask for approval of those, which is the mass language went out last time. There was an update, or there was a repeat email sent today that some added to it. But I'd ask them to approve those and include them in the policy manual.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions?
I mean, I would also ask for a vote on.
Motion carries.
For updating the Manchester Essex Regional School District admissions and residency policy to include the edit in the first paragraph. So students who are in foster care or qualify under the key event will be admitted in accordance with state regulations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Great, thank you, guys.
Okay, just one follow-up comment. Ken said something which is kind of the shortcoming of the process. So these are, we need to go into the policy manual, but our policy manual is hosted by MASC. So we have a little bit of a glitch between policies get passed, but they don't get sent up and re-bran, re-marked and posted online. So at the beginning of the year, as part of the policy, where I do have an ongoing index of policies that have been passed but not posted. So slowly but surely, this goes to our lack of bandwidth, which I'll talk about in my goals. That's been kind of worked away. So we have an accounting of what needs to get updated. The hope is this summer, when we find a quiet day, that Shelley can connect with MASC. I can connect with Shelley so she can come and connect with MASC and get our entire policy manual cleaned up and up to date. Cause some need to come out and some need to go up.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's important.
Just a point. So like, if you go next week to see this policy online, it won't be there. There's considerable lifetime.
Okay, all right, thank you for that.
We do have a page, just the landing page for policy manual does have the most important current policies that maybe are still in transition. So things like harassment or bullying, things like that.
So you think by like the start of school, hopefully?
Yeah, that's my hope.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you. Negotiation team?
No report. That's, that's happy.
There is also the new, uh, the teachers' association leadership.
Oh, yes. Yeah, who? Somebody mentioned that to me. Who? I've forgotten. Joanne Seaman.
Joanne Seaman and Abby Donnelly are gonna assume co-presidencies.
Oh, great.
Joanne Seaman and Abby Donnelly.
Terrific.
And then Mr. Martino is still gonna be the.
Vice President. They haven't sent me the whole slate yet. It was on the e-board. I just had hopped into Joanne in passing and I know she was toying with the idea of running, so.
So amongst their people that have served on the board, I believe, for.
Everyone's. Negotiations.
So they're the new co-chairs?
Yep.
Co-presidents, sorry. Yep.
That's great. That's great news. Okay, so that wraps up subcommittee reports. Onto our literacy assessment report.
So we're still waiting on Darcy. I'm happy to do my finals update and touch on summer schedule. Just my general report, if you wanna take it out of order, we can just focus on literacy at the end.
Yep, let's do that. I didn't realize Darcy hadn't arrived yet.
That's okay. So just very quickly, it's graduation week. So some people have, we have a hundred kids ready to go on Friday. It's always, we call it wedding week around here. Everything's on edge and we never think we're gonna pull it off and then magically it all comes together at the end. So everything's on track. Baccalaureate's at seven o'clock on Thursday night. If, you know, it's, if you haven't seen it, it's really one of the most beautiful ceremonies we do. It's very solemn and showcases the kids' talents and it's reflections on how, you know, what their experience has been here, how they are thinking about one another at this point and their hopes for the future. It's really a lovely night. It's here in the auditorium.
It's nice, cause it's not about just the kids who academically have shown. It's about the class and its collective talents and how they celebrate one another. I actually really liked that night.
It's, like I said, I always say, I always put it in my notes every year, it's just why, it's like, it's one of my favorites. It's like, and at this time of year, it's, we're wearing down and people are kind of, we know what's going wrong, we know who's not getting along. And it's to watch the kids kind of come full circle from being freshmen and sophomore. There's something in each year that's challenging for kids and puts stresses on parents and students. And then to go in that night and just, the parents can sit back and celebrate the kids' accomplishments. It's just really very uplifting. And then to follow that up with graduation the next day, kind of what it's all about.
Yeah, it's a nice way to cap the year.
And it always kind of works out. It all comes together in the end.
Yeah.
Can I speak of one other thing? The awards night was last week.
Yep.
And the Manchester Essex Education Fund. That wasn't just that, but it was $130,000 worth of scholarships that included Manchester Essex Education Fund. And the school, the school committee has a scholarship and we awarded that and I don't know who got it, but. Pardon?
Ikmaloni. I believe it was Ikmaloni.
Okay, so.
Oh, that's terrific. Congratulations to Ike.
Thank you to the school, the school committee and past school committee members for supporting that. It's very nice to be able to give a scholarship to kids. And we, it's actually a very, you know, Manchester Essex Education Fund is really doing good work. And I'm proud to be.
Thank you for the work.
Her mother-in-law started many years ago, so it's, it's really a great, a great organization. And I think we have a lot of community support for kids, so $130,000 is a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. Thank you for your work on it. Thank you for your mother-in-law.
It's awesome. So that's another amazing neighbor with kids' academic talents and athletic talents on display. And we have a lot of kids who excel in many different areas. And it's kind of neat to see how many kids are multitask, multi-talented and successful in many areas. So if it's, this time of year, it's, it's just great to see the kids being celebrated for all that they've accomplished. Next week, just very quickly, Tuesday night, it's, we're moving on next week. So moving on, Memorial School, Crossing the Bridge, 6:30 on Tuesday night.
We have a bridge to cross, thank you.
All of the D-word.
On Wednesday, it's the Essex Moving On Ceremony at 5:40 at Essex Elementary School. Each feature slideshow, it's slideshow time of year too. But you know, they're, they're wonderful if you have the time to take them in because you can really see the different, the spirits of each building are represented in each of those celebrations. And then Thursday night is the grade eight moving on ceremony capped off by the dates.
And that's Thursday night?
That's Thursday night.
And what time is that?
That one's at six. Nobody, nobody needs to be at any for all of them. It's just if you're ever curious.
Couple of years, we've tried to always have one person.
Yeah, we try to have.
I will be at the eighth grade graduation ceremony. I think Ken will, Shannon will.
I'll be at E, I'll try to go there.
I'll try to go to the E.
And then one, just one other, we're gonna talk literacy so we can applaud her again. But just this afternoon, we did, Julie put on the Leadership Academy focused on literacy, which is the first of a two-part series. And it was tremendous attendance and just a really, I think, uplifting afternoon and a good example of the hard work that she's been doing to try to bring our K-8 program in line and just on the future. So thank you so much for doing that. It's pretty amazing. Thank you for, Sarah came, Annie came for a little bit. It was, I thought it was great. I don't know if you guys.
No, it was impressive.
It was amazing. I totally get that on reading. And there were a lot of like really, really big, important reading people from all around the state who came.
It was really exciting. We had about 120 people in 20 sending districts.
Wow.
Yeah, so we have a nice regional network that we're setting up. So we're excited about it. Part two next Thursday, very interesting. And so we're excited about it. And, and we have people that want to join cohorts. So we'll be building a cohort model.
A cohort within our district or?
With a regional, with regional districts. So we'll be able to share resources and PD hopefully and grant money and things like that.
That's great. That's exciting.
And you know, the keynote presenter was really good. And I happen to have the link, so I'll send it to all the school committee people for the article that she shared.
Yeah, she was, she's a national educational correspondent. So she's done some pretty significant work at the national level in terms of pulling together just data on how reading is taught across the country. But you know, coming to Massachusetts was important to get her to come and speak because we're at the top of the food chain in that regard at, you know, if you're looking at deep data or any kind of reading data. And so what we found was that even across the state, there's a lot of variance in terms of instructional, you know, practices and data collection sets and all the interventions that we're doing. We're all reinventing the wheel in every single district. And so we thought it would be good for us to bring people together to start to have that conversation, how we can regionalize some of that work and also build in some evidence-based practices, which is what Darcy is actually gonna be talking about tonight. And she'll be here for day two on Thursday. And she'll talk a lot about the research that she's done. She was a practitioner at Mass General and now is the executive director for the literacy. And she has actually conducted our literacy audit, which we'll talk about tonight. So we're kind of roots on the ground and, you know, we're doing it here, but we're also doing it at state level. It's kind of exciting.
Thank you for all the great work on that.
It's good work.
Yeah, but I think Pam wanted to go through, do you want to do your goals first or?
Yeah, cause we need Darcy to do.
Yeah, she has her whole.
So on the goals front, you have them in front of you. This is just a draft, kind of my thoughts this week on where, where we're at. I forgot. Hard to believe, but like negotiation took up the first. Did I now pass them?
No.
All right, so last time we talked, I'll, I'll start again. Last time we talked was January. And in January, we were, we had two big things. We had finished one big thing, which was getting the building project passed. And we were starting to move into launching the project. So I would say, looking back on my goals, the two biggest things that I've consumed a year were the bargaining process, which when I looked at them now, I can't believe that it, I don't know where we fit that in where we had it, because it seems like there aren't enough hours in the day as it is. But we were able to accomplish everything we wanted to, everything that I had set out to do under, you know, conduct, the way we conducted negotiations and bringing it to fruition in a timely manner so that it coincided with our budget process and the town budget process. That all executed, so that I felt, you know, was a very much a clean, complete. I had carried on there. I don't know if you recall, there was a conversation probably almost two years ago now about the TAs forming a group themselves. But that seems to be on hold from the union's perspective, so I just placed it as a hold. And I don't think we need to pursue it on our end, because we had left it, that we wanted some more information from that. I think that's something that I can, you know, revisit with the new co-presidents as we set out in the fall to see if that's something that's still on their agenda. Yep.
And that's a question? Let's get, let's let Pam get through it and then come back.
Yeah, cause I think some are quick, some are quick checks. So that's a quick check. The other one that's a quick check is the budget. There wasn't much there that we didn't accomplish other than we wanted to, we want to redesign the annual budget document, but I had said in my initial goal setting that it would probably be a two-year process and it says March. So March 20 is when you'll probably see some of the beginnings of the budget book being redesigned. We have ideas. We're working on some things in the background in terms of how to restructure it, make it more user-friendly. The thinking is to add some more narrative components to it. But we'll have to lay that out for principles at the outset of the budget. So hopefully by this spring, we'll have a new redesigned budget booklet. In terms of our technical goals around the budget of getting one passed and doing it within two and a half and within the town's means, we all went through that process together. So you know all of the twists and turns that that took. Shannon, you referenced that the collaboration, I think, was key in getting that done. So just open and honest discussions about where we're at. And I would say my big walk away, my reflection is something I hope I'm saying loudly and again and again. We have, I think we have run out of creative efficiencies that don't start to impact program. And up to this point, they may have impacted program, but they were in ways that we thought were progressive and helped us actually move to a new place. I'm not seeing, and maybe we could find some more and we'll always look, but I'm not seeing any more attrition that's going to help us with the bottom line. And I'm not seeing any more easily identifiable program changes that aren't going to really force a difficult discussion about what our values are or where we want the program to be. Not that those aren't healthy discussions to have and elementary foreign language comes to mind as one, but it's not a simple one that we can make a clear, oh yeah, let's do this. It makes a lot of sense if I haven't thought of this before. So I'm just gonna keep saying it again and again. Those are the things that are starting to concern me about the budget. That and just, I don't know how I know. I just know we're probably going to get some enrollment increases at the memorial school. It's been, you know, rolling down, but private, even if the demographics broadly don't support an increase, I think returns from private schools may, because it's gonna be a very enticing building. And we know that what we went through last time, there was a slight economic downturn and a high, high housing market here that a lot of empty nests got filled with.
And a new building.
Families. So I think it's something we need to be prepared for. We aren't going to have creative financing to add teachers when that happens. So, and I think we've tapped out school choice as a source of income. So no red flashing lights yet, but just things that I have in the back of my mind as we head into the next budget cycle, I think it's gonna be challenging.
And that's a message we will continue to send in the collaborative group as well.
I think we worked, you know, really well with the towns again. And just two kind of FYI pieces. We worked with the regional roundtable, that's the superintendent's roundtable, to work with the state legislators on the chat. We didn't talk a lot about the chapter 70 funding formula revisions here. But we did work pretty closely with Brad and Bruce and the other, and Ann-Margaret and the other reps from the region to just let them know that what's on the table for proposal doesn't really do much for districts like Manchester Essex or even a Hamilton Wena or an Ipswich. Because basically they're, they're targeting districts with high need, low-income populations, which is, I think we'll always say the right thing to do and the priority we should have. But there's not enough resources to do that and then help districts like ours that are totally dependent on problem taxes in that two and a half each year. So I think we were able to make the argument that if they could do something around circuit breaker and fully fund circuit breaker and include transportation in that, that we at least get some relief from what we were paying out to make it feel like we got a little bit of a buyback. So we worked, I worked with a group in the planning board to kind of create an infographic, which I'm happy to share with you, that we sent around to the state superintendent's group and to legislators to kind of lobby, lobby them for a little bit more thoughtful change. And I think we're, we're becoming more successful with our town partners to help them understand what we're helping, trying to help the state legislators understand, which is the nature of schooling is different. Everyone's trying to fund through an academic concept that existed many years ago. But we've added an entire social services component for which there's been no new funding. So funding's transferred from one budget to another. So you've heard me say this before, I think we're making headway with the town because we've all come to an agreement that an SRO is a good investment now. The committee hasn't formally approved it yet, I understand, but the town is buying in. So I think the question is how do we move forward on that? So I think the question is how do we move forward on that? And I think that's a mark that they're hearing that our work has changed. Just a couple of other points. I think the third-party reviews, so on, you know, the assessed quality and provision, I'm not jumping around. Assessed quality and provisioning in target areas of the academic program. So the first one, student learning, that, my assessment there is that is all going on schedule. We continue with the third-party reviews as part of continual improvement. We get the data, we report the data here in a timely manner and then take that information and turn it into action steps either in the district plan or the appropriate school improvement plans. You're going to hear, you know, where we are on the literacy front tonight. You've already seen that we've made some policy updates based on a, you know, in real time based on a report that we got back this year. Looking back, we were going to be implementing some FY18 reviews on my level. I mean, a lot's going on at the school, but in terms of the district or my supporting, things that have been recommended is we worked with the budget to reorganize some staffing to meet the recommendations in the elementary special education program. So that was the transition at Memorial School to add a liaison to help push in more than pull out, which was a, which was a finding or a suggestion there. The middle school education liaison structure has been reorganized per the NOS report and they're going to be looking at more of a content-based support model than a grade-level support model. So the new liaison hired there has been hired to assist with that and the structure is going into place for next year. And we've talked a lot about the high school administration restructure. The literacy intervention, we're going to talk in detail about that tonight. So I would say my big misses, what's the, the curriculum ruler is on task. We haven't talked about it because our other items seem to have taken center, but that has gone smoothly throughout the year with the most intensive focus being K-8. Middle school has gathered some data, if I can get them here on the 18th, I'm going to have them come. But they did present also at the regional group to great, great feedback. We've been asked by Middlesex Partnership for you to team with them next year on some presentations, possibly teaming with Mark Brackett himself to talk about how you can roll out a successful implementation. And I would say that the key thing to remember there is that we're in year two of the overall implementation, which is year one for kids. So this is the first time the kids have ever really heard about it. So everyone's kind of getting their seat legs. So the data we're collecting is primarily baseline data to see where we are three and four years from now. So it may not be what everybody's talking about today, but the goal is to get it to be what kids are talking about and doing in a way that they're thinking three and five years from now. So that doesn't, doesn't sound like an immediate solution, but that is the game plan. The bigness is they're just, it's a bandwidth problem. I just didn't have enough time to reestablish the health and wellness committee. That's a big piece that I'm interested in doing. It's just work that there was no place in the schedule for this year. So I'm going to move it as a priority goal for next year. And we're still struggling with ClearGov. We focused.
I'm struggling, she's not struggling.
We are because I'm not, I'm not. I think my big walk away in this is there are only so many hours in the day. So we do have to choose priorities and it just didn't rise to the level of pushing something off the $52 million project to sit down and do a data assessment. And it does fall on Avi and his plate has been extremely full. But on the bandwidth issue is, we get reminded often that we're a small business, not a major corporation, so we just don't have layers of people to hand off some of this work to. So some of it does sit longer than we'd like it to. No excuse, just a very honest response, we, there just wasn't time to get it done.
And you had a very, very busy year, get it?
And cultural proficiency, I can't even, I don't have my glasses on. I think that was, that's under the, I'm skipping back up, under the social emotional ruler goal. I have snuck in some R and D here and there and hopefully that's something that can kind of move to the fore next year. So there's a lot of.
Where are we?
We are the back page.
Back page.
Top box.
Got it, thank you.
I explore and identify opportunities to expand cultural proficiency for students and staff. That was my goal and my hope, to be able to get out, get to some PD, find out what some other schools are doing. So I've got some lists of things, I've got some reports from other schools to take a look at to see how they've tackled it. I just haven't been able to look at it in any constructive way to create kind of an implementation plan or a set of recommendations.
Understood.
That's kind of it in a nutshell, so overall pretty good. We just, we've only got so much bandwidth.
Bandwidth, yep. It's not a story in a way everybody else doesn't know, right?
Well, and Erica, you've all kind of sat through this before. You, I think what ends up happening is, hopefully none of this is a surprise to you. We, most of these things we're kind of working on, not kind of, we are working on hand-in-hand throughout the year. So, you know, there's always opportunities to check in and ask. So we can always do more goals check-ins to keep ourselves true. I don't know if that's going to make more time in the day.
Hey, just remind us, but you need more hours. Great, thank you for this.
You're welcome.
I know that there are probably some questions, should we take them around the horn? I know Annie, you had a couple?
I'm going to hold them because I really, I wanted to.
Okay.
I was just wondering, I had a question about the Clear, ClearGov. So Avi, we did a, if I remember correctly from our meeting with them, we did a subscription model. Are we, does that kick in when we launch or is it kicked in already?
No, it's kicked in already and I think we have some basic information, I believe, that is available on the public site. It's really the drill-down detail.
Okay, so that's the part that's, that we need to.
That we want to kind of fix up.
So there is something, I haven't checked it in the last month or there.
Yeah, it's there, it's live.
Okay.
I believe there is some basic information there last time I checked.
I think I looked right after they launched.
It tracks with our state reporting, so it's a reconciliation to ensure that what we reported at the state is what's showing and that it's accurate.
Right.
So that we're not giving away misinformation.
Right.
The only other quick comment on that is that the DESE is continuing to refine its details and they're getting more and more into extreme detail. And as that happens, I think the comparability between districts, I believe, is going down. And yet the scrutiny is going up in terms of public visibility. So we just need to be aware of the fact that sometimes you might see things, just let me know once I get my part done, you know. And it's a moving target for all districts are dealing with this issue. More data being provided at a microscopic level and it's not always so comparable.
Okay.
Well, do you mind if I just build on that? One of the things that, Megan and Pam, you're talking about the goals about redesigning the budget or the budget documents in the presentation. If I were to summarize when talking with residents of the towns, the usual questions around finance in the district, the usual questions that come up are, what's the history? People will say, what events were that year in terms of costs going up and down? What's the future? When did we last have an override? When's the future? Those are like the common questions that come up and it would just be good. And I know ClearGov is one format, it's awful to have data for, okay, this is for ClearGov, this is for ours. It'd be interesting to see if you can kind of, just even for putting it out to the public. Hey, here's the past 10 years, the one pager on, here's what went on and here's what things look like and here's our response.
Good idea.
Isn't that a page in our budget booklet anyway?
We have a one-pager, but you know, I think if there are specific recurring questions, I would love to kind of update it based on what you're hearing. And so just to make sure our kind of one-page snapshot hits the most common questions. I'm sure one of them that we don't include in there is when the last time there was an override. We try not to use that word unless, you know, unless it's necessary. And, but to your point, some people want to know that, maybe we just get it out there.
And the reality of small town funding is generally if people are, okay, it's within the rounds. What we've seen is that there's definitely a lot of trust put into the district in terms of how you build the budget, how we go through, how we manage, especially over the past couple of years. But that's just, it's one of the discussion points that comes up and how people think of it. And I also know, we tend to be very conservative with, okay, here's how long we're going, but here's how long we hope to go. So that just provides that grounding.
And not to belabor it tonight, I can talk more in this next session or this summer. My thinking behind the goal on changing the budget booklet is to make it less wonky and more user-friendly. It is very technical, there's a ton of information there. I like the Hamilton Wena design, I put the Lexington and Wellesley design. It really, it features more a by-school snapshot and takes some of the highlights that we put in our annual report that gets varied and puts them at the fore as a small introduction to the budget. So you can really, a parent could pick it up and kind of take a look at their school, can kind of go very easily to where the personnel page is instead of really being interested in poring through all of the spreadsheets. Because you need to know what you're looking for to kind of make sense of the way we're presenting. It's always been the way we've done it, the information's there, it's transparent, but that's the hope. So anyone with communications experience who wants to. Give us some suggestions, we're open.
All right, thank you very much. In order to get you guys out of here on time and Annie and Caroline want to see this presentation, I think we should.
Darcy thought she might want to present upfront, she.
Yeah, perfect.
Welcome, Darcy, thank you for joining us. And I'm sure she'll introduce herself, but I could start a little while you're getting set up. If that's helpful. So today we had a rather large presentation on the science of reading, which is a focus area that we've been trying to address across the state for over 20 years, in all honesty, about the teaching of reading and what are all the different components that are needed throughout. And our speaker today really alluded to a lot of things that not only did we deal with in Massachusetts or are dealing with in Massachusetts, but what's the conversation that's being held nationally. So we're excited that we were able to have that today, so thank you for everyone, for your support. Darcy was one of the speakers in this series and it's interesting how we've all come to kind of learn about each other in this process of reading people, find reading people, which is kind of interesting. And we've had, we had some interesting connections today that we talked about. And Darcy is one of the reading people, if you want to think of it in that regard. She heads the Hill Center for Literacy. And we actually contracted with Darcy to come in and do a literacy review of the K-8 models that we have functioning in the district. And we did that for a number of reasons. One, to really get down deep into what does instruction look like at each grade level across each school and across schools. And so we looked at the K-5 model in both elementary schools as well as the middle school model. And we did that so that we could get some real data to use to talk about some of the different practices that we might need training on to help support and organize our curriculum and our infrastructure. And with that comes an action plan, which we've been working on as a committee after school to kind of meld all of this together and to build a long-range plan ultimately. And this stuff does take very fire, so I'm glad you said that, Pam, because it does take time to build the plan and then implement it. But implementation is the hardest part of every, of all of the planning and the collecting of data and the analysis. We can do that rather quickly, but it's the implementation of all of these structures and ideas that takes time. And so you don't necessarily see the automatic results because you have to build the infrastructure first. So that's what Darcy's going to talk about today.
All right. That's Julia Sun, Darcy Burns, executive director of Hill for Literacy. And Manchester Essex brought us in to conduct a comprehensive needs assessment. And that's typically what we like and prefer to do as an organization. We begin a partnership with a district. We conduct a comprehensive needs assessment to identify the things that are in place and then identify where there might be redundancies and gaps in the current literacy model and then develop a literacy plan to implement over multiple years. And so we, at the Hill, we have been around since 2001 and partner with state departments and districts all over New England. And so we do a lot of these needs assessments. So the process that we use, we do several things. We conduct focus group interviews where the principal and leaders create a schedule where we interview typically four, and in this case about, you know, four to six people at a time. And we interview everyone in the building who is responsible for teaching literacy. And we, so we conduct focus group interviews, we do them one day. We have a survey called the P E R survey, which is, was developed by the University of Oregon that's intended to help schools self-evaluate where they're at with like the big components of a multi-tiered systems of support or a school-wide literacy model. And that, that is completed via SurveyMonkey. And then we also do some inventory surveys. So we want, we gather information about all the programs, resources and materials that the teachers are using to teach literacy, regular ed, special ed, reading teachers. Assessment survey, the program survey is completed by individual teachers. The assessment survey, we gather information again from regular ed, special ed around what assessments are being used in the classrooms and in intervention. And we have teams of teachers complete those. They, regular education teachers complete it as a grade level, special ed, reading teachers. And then lastly, we do a professional development survey. What kind of professional development has the district and schools engaged in the last five years? So we have a report, I see a copy of it, that can be made available, right, to everyone?
Yep.
So this is, what I'm presenting is a summary of the report. And so there in the report, in appendix A, is the timeline. So we met in the beginning and planned for this needs assessment. And so there's an activity timeline in appendix A that outlines everything we did from the very first initial meeting to the literacy plan. And it's also described in the methods section of the report on page one. So who is involved? We interviewed 62 teachers across the three buildings. We, 962 interview comments were collected and 59 P E R surveys were conducted or completed through SurveyMonkey. So I'm going to, so in, in the report, there are appendices. So appendix B has a summary of the actual inventory of assessments. I'm just giving you the highlights or if not, we'll leave me here a while. So I abbreviated this, I already presented this to the entire, all, the whole staff. And, and, and so this is, I kind of, you know, took a few slides out to not make it so long. But you have access through the report to all, you know, the actual inventory and how it's organized. Appendix, these, appendix B, it's, we took all the assessments across, that were reported across all three schools and put them in the first tab called combined, and then it's also broken out by school. So there were 158 different assessments reported, which is a lot. And so, but of those 158, there is definitely a universal screener, progress monitoring tool and diagnostic tools in place. But there is variation, different assessments used across schools and also obviously also across grade levels. And there was a lot of program-related assessments. And that will make sense to you when you see the program survey data because there were 285 different programs, resources and materials reporting being used for teaching literacy. So there's various programs, resources and materials for literacy instruction. But unfortunately, that means there's a lack of consistency across grade levels in schools. And also there was a lot of inconsistency in the naming of the materials and then there were some assessments in the program survey. And that could be just that, you know, when we, this happens sometimes that when they're completing two different surveys that they forget one's program and assessment. And the naming of materials, that you're also going to see that when you have so many. And so one of the first steps that we'll do with both the assessment data and program survey data is to first kind of clean up the naming of things and that will make those numbers come down. There are some things listed that really mean the same thing and we actually know that, but we can't change that. We, we just gather the data and we report it back out. We don't, we don't make any assumptions, we don't change any language, even though, you know, we can tell that some things mean the same thing. But that's, that'd be one of the first things. So both the assessment number and this number will come down a little bit once the naming of things is cleaned up. And then professional development, there are many offerings delivered by a combination of district trainers and outside consultants. But again, the focus of professional development was very different across the schools. And there was some program-specific training recorded and then also some time devoted to developing phonics scoping secrets that was listed. All right, so those are the surveys. Then we conducted the interviews, as I said. The process is we have interview questions that we ask, we. We meet with the focus groups in a closed room, they're completely anonymous. We just type the responses into a spreadsheet, and then we code them after, for strengths and weaknesses, and by category. So the questions we ask, what's it like to teach and work here? We ask, regarding reading and writing, what's going really well, what strengths, what are you proud of? Regarding reading and writing, what's not going well, so challenges, issues, concerns? If you were in charge, what are the top three things you would do over the next couple of years to get all children reading and writing? And then is there anything else I should know that would help us understand your school? And so as I said, we just type the responses into a spreadsheet. And then we code them to be Strength or Needs, or SRN. And then we code them by these nine categories, which are also the same categories in the P E R survey that the T E C O N survey. So in essence, we're getting data two different ways about what's going on around this current state of literacy, through verbal focus group, and then through a survey, a literate scale survey. So the categories are goals, objectives, priorities. So there's about seven to nine, that's for the P E R, I'll tell you that. But these, so there's nine categories. Goals, objectives, priorities, assessment, instructional programs and materials, instructional time, differentiated instruction, grouping scheduling, administration, organization, communication, professional development, culture, and home family. We also code, because, I would say, we're asking the question, what's it like to work here? That's where we get at, what the culture is in the building, in the district. Although that is not an actual category on the P E R. It's a category that we add. And also, the P E R, for some reason, there's no home family. But we code, often, you know, folks talk about the role of parents and families in school. And we capture that in the interviews. All right, so the interview, how we report the data, is we collect it, we code it, and then we look for trends. And so something usually has to be said about, you know, five to seven times before it becomes a trend. If it's a category that has less comments, you know, we try very hard to get something out of it, so it could be something said three to five times, and that might make it in there. These are actual comments that were sent in the interviews. These are what came out as the trends. So we report out what the total number of comments are. So that's, so this is instructional programs and materials. So I'm going to share this by category, in the order by the number of comments made. Because some categories and some topics, people talk about a lot more in the focus group than others. And this is a big one. In all of these assessments that we do, this is, obviously, the use of programs, resources, and materials is a very big topic, especially when in a district that has a lot of resources, programs, and materials. So there are 434 comments said about this, 146 were considered strengths, 288 needs. So the gist of it, they have a lot of text, there's multiple texts, lots of reading material for children to access, through leveled libraries, and novels, and nonfiction, and fiction books. They also reported that they have a lot of flexibility, a lot of resources, and freedom to be able to use these materials and things. And, you know, it reported that as a strength. On the flip side, where there's areas of need, so ironically, if you look at consistent curriculum, although, and this comes out a lot, when schools have a bunch of different things, people like it, but then, but then they, but then they also report out that they don't like the inconsistency. And particularly, when you, in the focus groups for upper grades, middle school, and third, fourth, fifth grade, they report out a lot about that they don't like the inconsistency, because students are coming to them with different experiences. So that's why you get this, you know, kind of pro-con thing. So it was overwhelmingly, it talks about the need for consistent curriculum, the need for a roadmap of what to teach. And then there were gaps in instruction, some, you know, comments on spelling, on grammar, and writing. Writing, people talked about a lot, the need for consistent approach. So lots of materials, need for consistent approach for writing, need curriculum for phonics, grammar, spelling. Culture, so 200 comments regarding culture. This is, it was overwhelmingly reported about what a positive environment this place is to work. I mean, I've done a lot of these, I've never seen it where there's, I couldn't even get a need out of this. So, I mean, people, I mean, they report, the staff really love working here. And they, and people said it's the best place they ever worked, and it's very collegial, everyone's very dedicated, respect, family, all those, very collaborative willingness to work together. And it was overwhelming what they reported. So, and again, there were 21 comments, we were able to code need, but no trend in there. Essential place to work. Next, differentiated instruction, grouping, scheduling, 152 comments, 66 strengths, 86 in the area of need. So reading support, people were overwhelmingly reported that they have, you know, a lot of support for targeted instruction, reading teachers, and that the reading staff is an outstanding resource, important asset. The area of need is the schedule is an issue, that the master schedule, the students are missing instruction, scheduling and coordination of regular ed, and RTI, and special ed. And then large class size, and the large number of students who require additional instruction or special, or differentiated instruction in middle school is difficult. So the large class size was more about the middle school, not the elementarys. So, which is that master schedule appears to be an issue, high numbers of students requiring reading and differentiated support in middle school. Goals, objectives, priorities, two strengths, the area of need, 43. Again, a lack of consistency within, between grade levels. We need something that carries through from one grade to the next. Two schools are very different, that came out a lot. I mean, they, you know, even that there's a, there's a big difference between the two schools. Not sure what's, instruction students are exposed in the elementary schools, because it's so varied. Needs to be more consistency between regular ed and special ed as well. Administration, organization, communication. So 18 strengths, 21 needs. So this, in the Essex school, the staff talked a lot about the principal. And this was something that was different, too, that I haven't, and I've never really, in all the needs assessments I've done. I mean, they might talk about administration, but not, but it was so much that there was no way I could have, I had, I mean, there was so, a lot of the teachers, so that's why that is there. It's not, and it wasn't that the other school, they just didn't talk about the administration, that's all. You know, it wasn't, like, it was, you know, they just didn't talk about it. So, and then the other, but the main thing that folks talked about around need was the library, the library, maintaining library support, and the technology support.
Did that come from both schools?
Yes, it came from both schools, but more at Essex, but yes, it came from both. Assessment, not that many comments about assessment. I was able to get a trend out of, that they collect data to inform how we group students. The area of need was maze testing is, is not the best testing for measuring comprehension. In the middle school, we need assessments to tell us about where students' needs are, to monitor progress. Instructional appropriation time, so the area of need was need more time for vertical teams to meet and collaborate. And need more time for regular education and special education to meet. It was, it was, yeah. Professional development, only 18 statements about professional development. And of those, I was able to get a little bit, needing about that. The main thing was that not everyone was being trained, they have all these programs, but not everyone was getting training. And so, and that it was important to include anyone who's responsible for teaching the program should be involved in the training. I think it was more like reading teachers and other support stuff. Home family, not, not a lot. I mean, what they did say, the six comments, they were all about that parents were supportive, and then needing to go home. But there were, this is an area that we said as a follow-up, that we probably need to dig, we're going to have a little subgroup on our district literacy team to kind of dig deeper in this. All right, so those were the interviews, that's the gist of the interview comments. Then after they completed the interviews, we sent out the Survey Monkey link, and they completed the P E R. And like I said, it's these seven categories, there are about seven to nine items for each category, and the participant just indicates in, on the survey, whether that item is fully in place, partially in place, or not in place.
Darcy, a quick question.
Yep.
What kind of take back did you get on the, or takeout did you get on the survey? How many people of?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, yeah?
No, fifty-two of the sixty-five, yeah, it wasn't, it was good. I mean, of course, I would want, yeah, 100.
I just wanted you to be able to frame that as.
Yes, no, it was a good, because sometimes, you know, depending on the size of the district, we sometimes have trouble getting those completed, but it was, it was, the main thing we want is that the number of people we interview, we want close to that, yeah, for the survey. And this is also a survey that we can re-administer at the end of every year or two, to show how things change. All right, so like I said, there's, they rate these items as being, you know, fully in place, partially in place, or not in place. And so this is obviously hard to see, so I'm going to go right to the summary. But this is how it's reported out, and you can see it, see it in the report. So in essence, under goals, objectives, and priorities, so that's, you know, about whether instruction is aligned, the goals for learning, you know, the guidance that we're providing around what instruction should look like. So this, this category receives similar ratings across all items, as you can see, it was, you know, it was very similar. The item regarding goals, objectives are clearly defined and quantifiable, and dedicated to essential components of literacy receive the highest rating. Results of the survey suggest there's still work to do on articulating goals across grade levels. So within a grade level, and what, people seem to be more, have more clearly defined what they're doing within their classroom, but there's less defining across the school. Assessment has the most items. So items related to having a screening measure in place receive the highest rating. And that is consistent with what we saw in the, you know, in the assessment survey, and what people reported about in the interviews. Training on how to administer, interpret, utilize the assessment data for all staff is needed. And all items in the assessment category are partially in place and merging to fully in place. So they all have pretty, pretty high ratings around assessment. And there has been, you know, work done around the whole RTI process, and using AIMS Web to drive instruction has occurred here for a while. Instructional programs and materials, so you can see the ratings range from, you know, .9 to 1.6. And so, again, similar, supplemental intervention programs are in place to support at-risk students was rated the highest. Which again is consistent with what they were saying in the interviews around having a lot of reading support, right, to provide intervention. Implementing a comprehensive core reading program, and high levels of implementation fidelity receive the lowest, which would make sense, you don't have a core reading program, so for that item. And then the other, around level, high levels of implementation fidelity. So again, teachers are recognizing, even though you have all these things, and all these choices, very hard to have high levels of fidelity to implement a bunch of different things. And so, you know, again, you know, the teachers and the staff in this district are well aware of where their needs are, which I think is very telling. Instructional time, these range from 1.0 to 1.6. Time allocated to reading instruction, coordinated resource, and instructional time for at-risk receive the highest rating, which again, you know, there's a lot of support provided through the elementary. Students receiving small group targeted instruction for 30 minutes receive the lowest rating by the teacher. So that is, and that's where the master schedule also comes in, right? There's not really this allocated time. There is time for students to receive some instruction from reading teachers, but there's not necessarily articulated time for teachers to be providing for all students. Differentiated instruction, grouping, scheduling, this ranges from 1.1 to 1.7. Items related to differentiated structure receive ratings of partially in place. Student performance used to determine instructional level and materials receive the highest rating, which again, that was articulated in the, in the interviews. And also the fact that there are so many reading materials, and teachers are, you know, matching students to those reading materials. And cross-grouping, we see the lowest rating.
Yeah, it was cross-class grouping.
That means when you, it's, when you take students and you have them, another term that's kind of attached to that recently, that's lasted quite 10 years, called walk to read. So during like a designated intervention block, like a small group instruction block, students go and receive small group instruction at their level. So that means that advanced students that are, you know, reading way above grade level would be together receiving instruction at their level, right? Students who have intervention or need lower, you know, have some gaps in their skills would be in a small group, we see that, and it's a way, it's particularly useful in, if schools are struggling with delivering small group instruction. And it's super useful if you don't have a lot of reading support, you know. So it's a way to be able to provide differentiated instruction without the teacher having to provide, one teacher providing it for students that have all wide-ranging skills. It's not the whole reading block, there would only be like a 30-minute intervention, you know, like people will call it, you know, RTI block, or WIN block, or, you know, something.
Okay.
We have that, okay, so that, can we get back to the end? This, I'm confused, it's like, that's not working.
And they might not have.
We have the WIN block, it's just saying like.
They might not call it.
It's a targeted intervention, so it's saying, we have these four kids that need this specific intervention.
Across the grade level, not just within a classroom.
So instead of one teacher doing that for the two kids in their class, and then the three other interventions that need to get done, it's separating it out. So, Darcy, you take those kids, you know, you take these four who need comprehension, I'll take the phonics, you know, and do it. So you don't have to learn all of the interventions, you're highly focusing on.
And there's probably some of this happening, it's just probably not happening with, across the classroom teachers, yeah. And they might not call it class, that's the other thing, is the terminology in the survey can also throw people off, like, if they don't call it cross-class grouping, they might not. But my guess is there's not a lot of cross-class grouping happening between teachers, it's more with the reading teachers.
Correct.
Administration, organization, communication, ratings 1.1, 1.5. Item four received the average rating 1.5, indicating that grade level teams are established to analyze data and structural plans. The items related to administrators supporting staff of coherent reading instruction and consistent implementation of practices receive the lowest. And also communicate a student's result with school and parent community, we see the lowest. Professional development, so 1.0 to 1.5. The item with the highest rating is that teachers have an understanding of grade level priorities and practices. The item with the lowest rating, there's time allocated for planning and refining instruction, which again, came out in the interviews. The overall is category is least in place relative to the others. All right, so that's the P E R. And so then, at the end of the report, what I, what we do is then summarize the survey, the P E R, the interview data into like a summary paragraph, and then make recommendations. So what I included for you are just the recommendations, instead of restating what the summary of each thing. the summary of each thing. But when you look at the report, you'll see that each one of these categories, you know, kind of is reiterating what the data just in a, you know, in a summary. So, and the recommendations are intended to be just a springboard, a starting place for, because the next step, which we already had one session of literacy planning. The idea is that these recommendations could be used as a starting place to build a district plan. So, goals, objectives, priorities. District administrators should continue to utilize a district leadership team with representatives from each school and this literacy leadership team should craft literacy goals and action steps aimed to increase consistency. So that's the development of the literacy plan. School administrators form school-based teams with representatives from each grade level and specialists. This team would develop school-based goals and an action plan that aligns with the district goals. So that's also kind of establishing the structure and utilizing these leadership teams to be able to establish that. And then create a subgroup of the district team to focus on setting implementing goals to increase alignment between regular ed and special ed. Assessment, district leadership team should use a framework to review the existing assessments so that the data, the survey data on assessments, integrate them into a framework, identify gaps and redundancies and, you know, and build a comprehensive assessment framework with, you know, a set number of assessments that everybody uses. One district-wide assessment tools are agreed upon, recorded on the framework, provide adequate training, a system for administering scoring and interpreting and measuring the effectiveness of instruction on a regular basis using those assessments. And then the district should organize their data from all assessments into one format that can be used to determine instructional decisions at least five times a year. So you have a data meeting process or building upon the data meeting process put in place Instructional programs and materials, district leadership team will review, the recommendation is to review the program survey data, again, mapping, identifying where there's redundancies and gaps and begin to build, yeah, well, first of all, to identify where there's redundancies and gaps and teaching all the components of reading, including writing, grammar, spelling. And then, and then the district should work to create a multi-tier model for delivering instruction and work on describing the model especially for tier one. That's the most, you know, that's, the focus needs to be on ensuring the fact there's a comprehensive and consistent approach to tier one instruction first and foremost and then, you know, work to build a tier two and tier three that's aligned to tier one. Instructional preparation time, develop schedules that allow for common planning time and collaboration for teachers, specialists, and special ed teachers at each school. Editor create a master schedule that has staggered academic blocks for small group intervention Differentiating instruction grouping scheduling, which is a little bit of an overlap with the other one. Develop master schedules in each school that have staggered academic blocks for both small group and intervention blocks to maximize the use of people resources. And then also consider cross-class grouping as a way to provide more small group instruction. So if teachers are struggling to have time to work in small groups, cross-class grouping is definitely a solution to that. Administration, organization, communication, utilize the district leadership team and school leadership teams to support district administration to establish and communicate clear guidelines and expectations for instruction. And then the last recommendation is to brainstorm ideas on how to maintain the support for the use of library and technology across the district. And maybe think outside the box about how to do that. Professional development, develop a professional development plan to support the implementation of programs and assessments that we've been articulated on the program and assessment frameworks. Utilize professional development time for regular education, reading, special education plan for instruction. Provide professional development and the science of reading and current evidence-based practices and assessment instruction to ensure there's a common and consistent knowledge base. You know, one of the things about having all those different programs and resources, there are many things in that survey that are not evidence-based. And so, before you can build a framework and agree upon, you have to make sure everybody is viewing this through the same lens. And then hopefully by building people's knowledge, then you can also moving forward, avoid having the picking and choosing adopting of things that maybe don't, aren't gonna give you the best results. Alright, so that's, that's the report. What we, so we shared the results in the school with everybody actually, together. And then on, and then Julie posted, did a posting for, recruited a district leadership team that has representation from all three schools so that all grade levels are represented between the three schools. Special education, principals, special ed director have now formed the team and they were great, they were awesome. They're, yeah, and the other big thing was getting people that can be excited and think about where we go next, you know, because, and, you know, and get behind it and really, you know, help move things forward. So we had our first literacy planning session on the twenty-second and then June twentieth, we're coming back together to finish that and then, well, we, yeah, the plan, well, the plan's already been shared, but it's just a draft form, but we have to finalize it. And that we shared and then the goal is to, they get to implement next year. Right?
Yeah.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
I know we have a couple, Caroline's already gone. Yep. So, Annie, you gonna head over there too?
I'm gonna leave at seven.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure you all got your questions asked.
Yes.
I know everybody probably has a lot of questions, so Darcy, if you wouldn't mind, we'll barrage you with questions. Sarah, do you wanna start since we usually go around this way?
I don't really have any questions. I was at a meeting today for the North Shore Leadership Conference. I live in the world of reading and I'm so excited that this is all happening. I know it seems like we have a lot of negative feedback and there's a lot to tackle, but I'm really confident that our team with Julie at the home is going to be able to take this exciting new project on. I couldn't be more delighted.
I'm excited about it too. I mean, it's not easy to unearth this type of information, but we're the kind of people that, I would rather know it now so that we can figure out the right plan of action and do it the right way. So, and sometimes it, and not, as I say, I'll get uncomfortable with the data to, in order to become comfortable with the outcome. So, and I feel like we were in that phase of collecting the data, it was uncomfortable to hear that we had a lot of different practices happening, but at the same time, now we know. So, and we can be better for it and I feel like that's, that's the tack that we're taking and that's how we're gonna move forward, so.
I just, I was curious, thank you so much for the presentation. I thought it was really good information and I agree with Sarah. I think, I think we have a great team and we're gonna tackle all these issues. And I think it was, I learned a lot, so I appreciate all the work you've done. I'm just, when you, in the very beginning, when you talked about the inconsistencies in the naming and you said that the numbers would drop.
Yeah, they'll drop a lot.
Is that just part of the whole literacy plan then?
Yeah, well, that's, the two frameworks.
Right.
And, but it's also, it's not, I mean, partly, we're not gonna change the data, we can't, we just report out, but also it's a PD opportunity. I mean, it's a part of building a common language and common knowledge. So it's an opportunity, first with the leadership team, but then they'll go back and do it with the school teams and the school team members will do it with the grade level. So it's an opportunity to build common language and, and clear up any misconceptions about things. But like I said, that, that number will, both numbers will come, will be a little bit less, but there's still a lot.
Right.
But definitely, and, but we wanna follow the process. We don't wanna just, 'cause, I mean, we actually could just sit there and clean it up, pass it out, but that's not, that defeats the.
The purpose.
The purpose.
Right, okay.
And we'll, and we'll learn a lot about what the misconceptions, and even, even the process, and that's the first thing that we'll work on, is building that assessment framework and program framework, which also enable us to have the district team work on it, go work on the school team, go to the grade level team, they bring it back. So it gives them an opportunity to be leaders, but also it's a whole nother opportunity to learn even more about where people are coming and what they're thinking about and, you know, it does contribute even more to this process of understanding and them hearing from each other. Because a lot of people think when they're in the room, everybody else is doing the same thing they're doing, but then you find out, oh yeah, no, you know, you have that, you know, or whatever.
And then you're gonna implement the plan in school year nineteen twenty and then when do we have another reporting back to us and maybe campaign to them as well? But I'm just curious, like when we see another.
Update?
Yeah, like an update. Do we get an update or do we see?
We can schedule updates whenever, whenever you'd like, honestly, because it will be a three, five-year process.
Right.
So I, I'm happy to, Darcy, we love to talk about this anyway, so we'd be happy to provide updates and.
And definitely when we've worked on things, we, you know, like those things, the program framework, the assessment framework, master scheduling, there's some things that are easy, they sound hard, but they're, I mean, once you get everyone.
Right.
Yeah, but they're not that hard to fix, some things, yeah.
There was just one thing that they said today was that somebody said that all the specials, music art, and gym are, are driving the whole schedule for when we're able to teach reading.
I had to leave for the interview.
Oh, yeah, so it was just a scheduling comment that we, that the specials determine when and, not how, but when we are able to teach reading.
That's usually when they're busy, and lunch.
Well, that's important.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I'll defer to Annie, I know she's been making this. I do have one on the.
We watched her.
So I was at the presentation today.
Oh, okay.
And I, I thought, there were some comments that I thought were relevant to this discussion and I wonder if you could speak a little bit to some of the things that this keynote speaker said and if you find that to be true.
Okay.
So, I thought that the remark about you need to define what reading is, because I think that the comment about parents supporting reading at home, well, they need to know what you mean by that.
I agree with that.
So.
We all agree.
Definitely.
Yeah. And then what happens the rest of the day was another thing that came up and I wonder, I hope that in the plan that, that you account for, not just literacy block, but literacy, and we've been talking about this for years.
Absolutely.
So, so I just would love for you to speak to that when, when we talk about the plan. And then there was a discussion about phonics and decoding and that those things can't be done in isolation and I wonder if you can just talk a little bit about what she talked about today in terms of that and then I've got a couple other things.
So, do you wanna hit the phonics?
Yeah, sure.
Because you've been working with that more intensely.
The real, so, so yeah, so students, I mean, need to be taught how to decode. That was, I mean.
Can you define decoding?
That means reading the words on the page. So there, and there's a, there's an order, there's a scoping sequence, there's, first you start with teaching phonological awareness, phonetic awareness, can you teach kids to hear sounds and words? And then, and then they map those sounds onto print and you start with certain letter sounds are easier than others, the continuing, hmm, is easier. And then once you've taught students a couple, you know, consonant sounds and a vowel sound, then they can start to blend those together to, to read words. And there's an order and it needs to be predetermined and how we teach it needs to be explicit. And then, and that can be done, I mean, some of that construction a little bit can be done brushing K one in a whole group, but it becomes more increasingly difficult as students learn it's super easy and other ones don't, so it becomes more difficult to do and is sometimes better done and differentiated. But, so we have to teach, but then students have to be able to apply what they've learned about the letters and sounds to reading words in text, you know, in sentences and then in books. And we want them to practice those letters and sounds we taught them in books. We don't wanna then give them some other book that does it, that has like more of a memorizing text or throws words in there like, the best is, I like hot dogs, I like bananas, I like, and there's a big picture of banana, big picture of a hot dog, but we haven't taught students to read hot dog. Hot dog is a two compound word, there's blood, letters, right? So if we haven't taught them to read that, we don't want them to be practicing, because all their, what they end up in thinking is that reading is guessing. And so, that's what she was talking about, saying.
That's a big part of it.
So people, everyone puts in phonics, you know, thirty minutes of phonics, but then they pull the kids into a reading group later where they're actually gonna practice reading and it's a completely different approach. And so, forty percent of the kids are gonna figure it out.
Yeah.
And I even say that number's lower than that, I think, but, but most kids, especially in this community, are gonna probably figure it out. But the rest of the students aren't. And so what they also learn really early on is that there's two different versions of reading. There's like a work version of reading when you're doing the letters and sounds and the phonics program, but then when you're in books or in your, it's a different kind and it's very confusing.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, and that is, that happens everywhere.
That's, that's what we're talking about.
That's the balance literacy, that kind of.
Yeah, and that's why you have to define what your reading model and what the science of reading. And it, and again, you know, some kids can overcome that, but there's a lot who can and, and why do it anyway?
So reading instruction actually is the responsibility of every teacher in every discipline. That's what I want, see, that's different.
Reading instruction, like what Darcy was talking about, is about the systematic and explicit instruction that happens in our elementary school.
Right.
She was talking about the elementary, you're talking about now you're gonna take all the skill and you're gonna apply all the skill and your capacity for reading to your various content areas. And that, that's like taking the reading to work, do you know what I'm saying?
But you're gonna, you're gonna teach students the skills they need in those different, in those other.
Disciplines as well.
Disciplines, knowing that they need to understand the.
Foundations.
Foundational skills.
And that's what, and they kept saying foundational skills today, they talked about, that's what we were talking about, was building the base for that, that kind of explicit tier one instruction in the right grade so that when you do get up into fourth and fifth grade or the middle school, you now are a reader at grade level and you can apply the practice of reading to all of these different genres, whether it's nonfiction and social studies or nonfiction and science, but you have the capacity to do that because you've done all the work underneath that in the, in the lower grade levels.
So the foundation you're also saying needs to be consistent through both of the schools and through all of those classrooms, because right now it is not.
Correct.
Everyone's got a little piece of it and they're applying a little piece of it, but it all doesn't come together like it should when you move forward and you start to use those tools, right?
So what we found from all of the surveys and the research that we did in the district was that each teacher may be, you know, doing their own particular thing that is good work, it's just not connected to the next classroom or to the grade level above it. And then when the two schools converge and come to the middle school, then we have that kind of hit the reset button. Now we gotta figure out where the kids are in terms of that level of content. So, and that's, that's the whole goal, really was for us to unearth a lot of this so we could put together a pretty consistent plan across the board.
And I guess what I'm trying to do is draw a connection between, we've been talking about literacy in disciplines, you know, that, that is a goal and that we've been trying to work towards it, but it seems like we've unearthed some weaknesses in instruction that are preventing students maybe from being able to feel confident and succeed in that area.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, thanks, that was, that was good to.
I would say our main weakness was systems and structures and I think that's the coming together of the region. Because we are, you know, we're gonna be twenty years young next year, we're still working on how to pull together two very distinctive ways of doing things. So we're doing it not only in a technical way, but in an adaptive way, because there's a big cultural piece too. Who gets to make these decisions and what is this district thing anyway that's going to ask us to change what we've been very successful with for years and do this thing altogether under the banner of the district?
But have we been really successful?
As a school district, we've been incredibly successful.
But if we have holes in kids not being able to read at certain points when they probably should, then that's why we're asking these questions.
And I feel like it looks different in each district, and then in a few different districts, I talked about it today, it presents itself differently. I think the way that we're seeing that present itself in this district is through the special ed, the rise in special ed numbers, the number of staff that we have to allocate to small group reading instruction for our interventions. for our interventions, the level of intensity that we have to work with for RTI. You can't remediate your way out of this problem. So what we have to do is focus on the tier-one instruction and make that strong and deliberate and consistent and effective. And then build our, and then build our tier-two and tier-three, which incorporate special ed, out of that. And so I feel like what, what we've been doing is trying to remediate our way out, not realizing that we had to finalize and kind of strengthen the base. And I think that was something that we really learned through this process.
There's a point in this, and I'm speaking with naivety, absent naivety around reading education. I can only speak with a little either individual point of view or for everybody. But the two, the two things that I thought were interesting is kind of what I felt was a little bit like a grab-back-and-punt. We'll brainstorm about the library and technology, because those are kind of your two platform ways that you formalize the knowledge, like you're going to be going through a teaming and a culture, and how do we do this? And everybody that goes through that process will, like, understand. But then it's, how do we ingrain it in the culture? That's, I'm kind of interested in, okay, typically the knowledge, the libraries are shared knowledge-based, basically, sort of in the school. They're also allowing you to be individualized, where you can take, I've got a seven-year-old who's, oh, I'm looking into Pokemon, so I'm going to try and read these weird names and understand how to pronounce them. And you can provide content, so anyhow, that's just...
We've had further conversations since, I think, the other thing we've unearthed kind of in this two-year process, and even looking at the different models of technology and library in each building, is they're very different models.
Yes.
So a good portion of the schedule of the library teacher in Essex was actually dedicated to intervention blocks. So not necessarily the same general library program that's being run at Memorial. So I think that's, I'm going, I'm just making an assumption, but I'm happy for your input. It seems to be a carryover of the culture component of this, which is, we're starting to talk about blending certain things and trying to ensure on the same page. And library and technology was the first conversation we had around that last year. And it feels, for one school, like a takeaway, because their person was retiring, the change happened on their scene. So we just had a conversation the other day about the fact that we're not looking at removing librarians or libraries. But we are saying that maybe the right-size FTE is important, and you have one at the secondary level and one at the elementary, and you can effectively carry out your program that way. So I think there's a lot going on, you know, the cheese has been moved a little bit, and people are just struggling with it, and it's fair. People have done a great job for a long time under this old model, and we're asking for a lot of change in a quick timeframe. So a lot of things were coming out through this. And I think that's why they wanted to articulate how much support they have. And they feel like they're losing some tiers of internal support for that. But that's just my take on it. I don't know if any of that came out.
Yeah, it was more, it was more than one school than the other.
Just two questions. Does this literacy plan have required any additional resources in terms of teachers?
We don't know yet, really. I would say if anything, we'd start looking at the coaching model and try to articulate what that would look like in the district so that we could build practice in infrastructure and professional development on the job. So that, that's definitely something that we've, we asked all the reading specialists to come to today's training because we don't really know what that model's going to look like yet. But it's great to have everybody in the room to hear the message at the same time.
And just one other question about, this is a big, you know, a big endeavor. And we have some other curriculum issues happening. I'm just wondering, are you going to be able to juggle this and other?
I am, because we have a plan. I think it was, it was more difficult not knowing exactly where we were, exactly what we were doing, and why we were seeing the data and the results that we were seeing without some real, really articulated information. So like anything, you needed to, we needed to get the information to put the plan together. And now, actually, I think it'll be easier, because we'll have a much more consistent and robust plan in place. We will know the timeframe, we'll know who's doing what, we'll know who needs what. And we'll build it together so that it can be dispersed across the schools and not necessarily in one pocket over here and then, you know, maybe at the middle school or something, you know. So it's much more consistent, which makes life easier, and we can plan for things better.
Yeah.
Thank you. A fine answer. Thanks very much.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Darcy, we'll be back. Many times.
Yeah, we'd love to hear an update.
Great.
All of my questions were already asked and answered, as they say, so thank you very much. This was very enlightening.
Okay.
What, oh, Eric?
Oh, I didn't have any questions, being new, not to use, um, new excuse. Not familiar with the program, I couldn't help but draw on a professional experience. When I joined, I have a communications, when I joined our team a couple of years ago, we were kind of all with this, a little bit of things. There wasn't, you know, really a coordinated approach. We did an extensive communications audit, where we gathered lots of data. And we've totally changed, transformed our team and enterprise. It's a much more coordinated, effective, organized approach, I think. So I think it's exciting to do something like this.
I have one question. Do you, have you been in a district where you've gone in and it's been kind of like a crazy chaos? And you've brought them all the way around to where it's performing like Harvard?
Yeah.
Is there a light at the end of the tunnel?
Darcy's got great data. They're across the entire city.
Yeah. I mean, one of our first projects, I mean, early on, it was in Carver, Mass. And they, they had 10 classrooms at every level. So, and they had, again, all different programs. And they also had a multi-age, a looping, and then just regular.
Oh, my God.
So, yeah, it was, and they, I mean, we, they're still the model. We have a, actually called the Makepeace Literacy Leadership Center down in South Shore that provides professional development for like the last 10 years for all the South Shore schools. That's how, yeah. But it, it's not, and then we've worked in a lot of, in the Connecticut project. I mean, these are underperforming, you know, schools. So you, you can show results faster to more students, because there's only one way to go in some of these schools. But, you know, here, I think it'll be, some things are going to be an easy, quicker fix. I think the harder part is, it's not, like you said, it's not, your issues with student data is kind of masked. It's hidden. I mean, you know, any, right, you're, you're high-performing in the state of Massachusetts, right? So, but it's, it's, well, it's not masked if you showed special ed referral numbers. And I'd also be curious as how many families are funding tutors at home, you know? And so, which could be an interesting survey. But, so, but, so that will be, it's not like there's this huge, it's not like the triangle's upside down and we have to flip it around, and that can be done faster. But, you know, so student outcome data, it's the referrals that are going to change. It's, it's where you're going to see is later, but you also have to be in it for the long haul. I mean, it didn't happen overnight, it doesn't happen overnight. I mean, you really have to put these changes in place in a consistent curriculum, and then you have to watch that kindergarten group go through. But by the end, I mean, Carver was getting awards for the highest SAT, change in SAT scores. And this many kids going to college now, I mean, it was, it's unbelievable, but they stayed the course. They didn't, nobody came in five years down, or even three years or five years and turned and abandoned it. They stayed with it.
I have a follow-up to. I wonder if, right now, we might have to make some initial financial investments in new curriculum and training. But in the long run, will we actually see some kind of cost savings?
Yeah.
I absolutely think so.
You have a lot of, you have a lot of people resources.
Yes.
That was one of the drivers to take a deeper dive, which is the intervention investments are just going through the route, both gen ed and special ed. And for all our trying, we're getting, you know, everyone cannot have small group instruction to get out of this, so...
And you don't have, you have a stable teaching population. You don't have, that's the other thing, in urban settings, not only are the students transient, but the teachers are. Not in this especially, people love to work here, and I'm assuming they don't go anywhere, right? So that helps. So you make the investment, you get everyone trained, people stay. And that, and then the students, you don't have a lot of transient students either. So you, you know, the majority of your students, you're responsible for teaching, right, K to at least high school. And so you...
It's a pretty sticky business.
So if kids can't read in middle school, you can't blame it on, because they came, you know, from down the street.
I think we're working on that. The articulation of design with the end in mind, and the fact that this is going to, I think, have huge payoffs for the middle school. The middle school's been a big part of our discussions and the work we want to do there, and some of the struggles that they're having, and that feeling in sixth grade, like, some kids are repeating curriculum and some kids are struggling. A lot of this comes from having to hit that reset button and do reteaching or blend the teaching that's been done. So actually giving the middle school the support it needs. So I don't know if the old adage stands, you know, learning to read then reading to learn. If they're still learning to read when they're supposed to be applying and growing, that's holding back opportunity for the middle school to grow and improve. So we can't always be looking right at the spot. If we have, sometimes we have to look back to understand the problem that's in front of us. So this has a real, a potential for positive implication on where students can go and how far they can reach all the way through. It's very exciting.
Your, your comment on the culture and how people love to work here, that's great to hear. I have a two-part question on that. Did you, did you get that feeling across the board on the schools, or was it just one school?
It was both schools, but more, yeah, but one, one school talked about it more, but, yeah.
And my, my other question, a follow-up to that, was, you know, we've talked a lot about change over the years and how there has been some resistance here and there to change. What do you think the appetite is for this? Are, are people kind of saying, well, actually what I'm doing is okay, it seems to be okay?
I think that's really the conversation. And it's, it's not about the fact that it's not okay, because people have been working really hard to create what they're teaching. There's no question about it, and people love what they teach, and we completely understand that. It's, what we're talking about is building in an infrastructure so that kids can really learn. So it's not always about what I love to teach, we're going to find places for those things. It's really about what we know our kids need to learn. And we have to just stick with that and know that we're really thinking about the kids in this conversation, knowing that they are going to leave us and have to go into the stratosphere of college. And we talked about today about the college, the level of reading that has to be done at the college level, the level of remediation that kids end up in at the college level, because it's really hard to read that complex text later on. So it's really about ensuring that we are doing the things that we need to do to get our kids to where we know they're going, so they can handle that level of material that they're going to be getting. And so that's the conversation. And so it's how do we do all those things, make everyone feel, you know, comfortable with that, and also be able to give people places where they can keep the things that really mean a lot to them as well. So that's an ongoing conversation.
I just have one more quick question. So we have one elementary school that assigns homework and another one, they both do reading homework, but another, you know, another elementary school that doesn't have a strict homework policy. Did that, did any of that information come up at all? Okay, so if this is...
No, it didn't, I don't, no, I don't, nothing, yeah. But the schools are doing different things, yes, but not necessarily specific to homework.
I was just curious if any of that data or any feedback...
No, they didn't mention homework, actually.
Everybody needs to read at home.
Right.
But we have to help people know what that looks like, too.
Right.
And so that's on us in terms of, like, when we identify what it'll look like at the grade level, we'll be able to help people with what that looks like at home. And I do feel like that's a, it's a lot of information for any parent to have to manage. So we want to be able to help people with that, too.
Sure, one more short observation in, in watching kind of the cultural blend. We're dealing with, we brought two systems together, and one was a K-12 system and one was a K-8 system. And I think it has different implications on how you look at the trajectory and the responsibility to the vertical alignment. So sometimes it's a little difficult to give up autonomy in a world where you've always had it, and then there's been an endpoint in release. So I think a lot of times we're just struggling with kind of recalibrating or kind of reculturing how we do things and how we make decisions and what. So that's an underlying piece that may slow the work a bit. I mean, you've been at this now for two years, and I think you're making excellent progress. It's, it's not going to be simple.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Julie, thank you for taking a deep dive and the inward look. And please do keep us posted, because we think we're all, we all like to geek out on it, even though some of us are a little bit more geeky than others.
He's a geek out on your numbers.
I do love it, yeah, I like to geek out on my numbers. So I think the last piece we had was the summer schedule, Pam?
Just confirming that we're on for August 6th for our retreat and time, typical time, 11:05?
Yeah, I had 11:05. Did we want to do a business meeting after or no? We don't need it.
We probably only need 20 minutes to do it at the end, to do a consent agenda. So I don't think we even have it special.
Call it 11:06, maybe?
Yeah, maybe just everybody reserve an extra, yeah. We'll hold 5:06 in case something comes up in July that we need to have a public forum.
Then we're also leading, um, the 18th.
The 18th, yeah.
And that's a regular 6 o'clock meeting here. Do we have the summer schedule in an email, do we have it someplace?
Yes, it's, it's on the end of the minutes that Gail just did.
Perfect, yeah, great. In the back of it. I, I have them, I'll put them next to my desk.
I might have them here at the next meeting, we have with them taped up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, any school committee comment?
I just had a couple of things, sorry, blah, blah. Two things. Susan Beckman and Lisa O'Donnell both retired from this, the boards of selectmen, and they were honored at each of the things. And I just wanted to acknowledge that both of them have been very supportive of the schools and were, have been great to our district. So I just wanted to acknowledge their service and their contributions.
Thank you for pointing that out. The SRO and the Chapter 70, and a budget estimate, like, I know last year we knew walking into, we knew at the end of the summer kind of what our deficit was going in. And I wonder if we can have a short discussion of, like, where we are with Chapter 70 and where we are with the budget going into next year, so that we can just get it in our heads and have, start having social...
In August?
If, yeah, when you know it, but, you know, will you know the Chapter 70, do you know the Chapter 70 numbers?
We have our placeholder.
Yeah, I just...
Find out July.
Yeah, and then, okay. And then, just, I don't know if I said this, but we, when we went to that 40 assets meeting, the superintendent in Georgetown has an SRO. I don't know if I spoke of that, but, yeah, they have a couple. And it was very good to sit down at the table and talk to them, because my understanding of what SRO did was completely different than what they're doing. And she offered to let us come in and visit them and talk to them about how they've effectively implemented the programming. And the woman, the SROs were there at the table and they were answering our questions. So it was, you know, it was good, and I think we would benefit from it. I think we'd feel better about being able to talk about it to constituents if we went. And she seemed, you know her, and, so...
And Georgetown is about our size, right?
Yeah.
For the fact that they're a municipality, we're almost identical.
This is the SRO discussion, and I'm glad to hear you saying that. It's, there's been a number of different things, and especially with the transition in the Manchester Police Department. I'd love to have just an agenda idea, even briefly, next time, and just spend five or 10 minutes, like, where are we at collectively?
If anyone wants to try to fast-track, Ed Connolly had teed it up and left it that we basically are all in agreement to execute as long, if and when we get the endorsement to go forward. We would have to come up with, I think, $35,000, $40,000 for our portion of the year, which we'll go and see and give you options on how to pay for it if you think it's something worth investing in. I think, we've been talking about it on and off for years, and if that, this can get people more comfortable with it, I'm, we'll be ready to execute pretty quickly.
Who do we need the endorsement from?
I thought it was budget neutral.
It was going to be budget neutral, but I don't think they had the personnel shifts that they thought they would have.
I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, but just, I can't remember. Would we be hiring the SRO or would the police department be hiring, or would it be a joint?
It would be, the police department would carry the person on their payroll, and then they would be ours for the school year, theirs for the summer and off periods.
They would make a recommendation, which is...
We would have, no, we have to hire jointly for the role.
Okay.
So they can't, it has to be a joint decision between the principal, the chief, myself, on who the individual is. Because you want the person to have the qualifications or training.
Right.
And temperament, really, because a kid needs to be an SRO in a school.
And there's also just the logistics of it, and I've forgotten and lost track of there, given that three schools, two towns, two police departments, how does, how does that part work?
I think we should put this on a...
Yeah.
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 I mean, there's a lot to unpack, and I think we should devote...
Yeah, because I would just... Yeah, because I would just offer something to think about. It's something we can make very complicated, and I think we've been a little stalled, basically because it's a three, it's a three entity issue, and, you know, which department is going to put up the person? And we would look at it as an open, it doesn't matter where the person comes from us, but we need the two towns to just be okay together.
It's kind of more like the scope statement of what's the relationship that this person brings to all three parties, and what do all three look for, and how does that work?
I mean, you, I mean, you can simplify it, too.
So let's do this. I don't know that we have time on the eighteenth to talk about it, because I think there are a couple of other things we want to talk about. Can we put it on the retreat agenda? Because I think that's something we definitely want to figure out.
Can I ask a request that we ask if we can go to Georgetown and just meet with them and talk to them about how they've set it up? I mean, they, they, this was all part of that discussion. The questions that just came up were all part of that.
Prior, prior to or following?
No, prior to.
Prior to, so we know what we're talking about when we get to the retreat.
Yeah.
Annie, do you want to quarterback that?
Well, I think, Pam, you're a colleague, she's your colleague, and she said she would speak to Pam. She knows you, and.
And when I was on school council before joining the school committee, this was a very big topic, and we actually had the chief of police come in and do a presentation. And I have all my notes and feedback from the way that school council felt about it at the high school level, so I can, happy to bring that information. It's only a couple of years old, but.
And I think, I know we don't want to rabbit hole, I, I'm going to just be brutally honest. I think the most difficult decision is just to say, "We're okay with the person being on one town's force or the other," and not try to create some pieced-together thing that makes people feel better but doesn't really work for us.
Okay. And I think, sorry, to piggyback on that, I think there's a lot of collaboration between those two departments that we don't even know about, and they both have new leaders. And so I think that that will also be part of that conversation, because they, they work closely already in many different aspects.
Okay, all right, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go.
Thank you.
Thank you.